I call this regular city council meeting to order for February 22, 2022. This meeting is being recorded. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Barbeau?
Here.
Blackmer?
Here.
Bona?
Here.
Harpen?
Here.
Obasahan?
Here.
Aluskowitz?
Here.
Sapienza?
Here.
Shade?
Yeah.
Wilkinson?
Here.
Nine present, we do have a quorum. Please rise for a moment of silence in member faces. And the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minute for February 8, 2022.
Most people approve.
Second?
Counselor Aluskowitz, Counselor Shade. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Hearing of visitors, anyone wishing to address the council on an agenda item, please approach the microphone, give your name and address for the record. You have two minutes, no personal attacks.
I'm Robert Smith, I live at 163 North Street. Madam President, councilors, mayor. This is in reference to the Gen., I, 12086 Code of Conduct. Unfortunately, since the councils are not really hired, they're elected by the citizens of North Adams, the Code of Conduct for employees does not apply. However, I want to make mention that professional conduct should be where you don't raise your voice at these meetings, you don't overtalk one at these meetings, you leave your bad day back at home. Do not bring personalities into council decisions. If your point of view is opposed by elders, do not take it personally. Remember, you represent the citizens of North Adams. Your decisions should only be what you believe is best for the city. I want to thank Counselor Shade for bringing this to the fore. I just want to say one more thing. For all you councilors here, if you cannot provide professional code during your term within the city, then you don't belong on a council. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the council on meeting, on items on the agenda? Seeing none, I close. Hearing of visitors. Council Paper 11,790B, communication submitted by President Blackmer to set a second joint public hearing with the planning board. Without objection, I'll file a communication and read it for the record. Communication from Counselor Blackmer to set a second joint public hearing with the planning board for Tuesday, March 8th at 5:00 PM to discuss the ordinance to amend Section 10 entitled Special Regulation of the Chapter Z of the Revised Ordinance of the City of North Adams regarding short-term rentals. This is the second joint public hearing regarding short-term rentals. It will be online, virtual, and we will have, we should have, be able to get two hours of comments in, considering we've already had an hour, that should be enough. And then we can also manage to get to our in-person city council meeting at 7:30. So, more communication, just letting everybody know to put it on their schedules for Tuesday the 8th. Counselor Harpen?
Normally, I don't know how this works, but maybe you can help. So, to the chair, will the short-term renter owners be notified?
I think we explained this in one of the city council meetings or the general government meetings, I don't remember, I just remember discussing it. We don't have a comprehensive list of them by name, they have them by address, by street name, but not by name and number. So, there will be a notice published, I know a lot of them, they kind of network with each other, and some of them will know because they're involved. I also know that several of the property management services are notifying their clients, and so I think word will get out. Counselor Bona?
Yeah, I think also there isn't a specific list, so every short-term rental, they're not everyone who's on Airbnb, for example, they can be just people who have decided to have a short-term rental and they do it on Craigslist or word of mouth. And one of the reasons that I originally brought this forward is because short-term rentals, up to this point, have, and I'll say gotten away with not having to be inspected. So, if they haven't been inspected, there's nothing in the city hall that would actually have a registered file of them. You know, there are some that we just obviously know, but that's been one of the issues that I've had all along, is that we don't have, you can't go down to the building department or health department and say, "Give me a list of the short-term rentals," because, again, they have not been, they haven't been inspected. So, if you go down there and ask for apartments, you'll see CCs for apartments, but you won't for short-term rentals. So, that was one of the initial things, why this all got started in the first place, but...
I will clarify that they have to register with the state, but then the state does not give us that detail of a list that we were able to send everybody notices, I guess. And that's something to take up with the legislators. Unfortunately, it's, I think, out of our purview.
To clarify though, they have to, doesn't mean they do.
And if they are part of one of the main, the VIBRA, the big ones, the VIBRA, anybody who does through any of the big commercial ones, they have to, because that's a condition of their policies. Counselor Shade?
Yes, with this ordinance, after the next public hearing, what are usually the next steps with an ordinance like this?
Normally, it'll then, it'll go on the agenda for the next planning board meeting, which is the following Monday. And they will discuss it, they will make a recommendation, the chair usually sends a letter to the council president. But they may have more than one meeting, they may feel that they need another meeting to really get, to get a handle on the issue. They may make recommendations, they may make changes, they may say, "We don't think this is a good idea, we don't want to do..." I mean, they can do any number of things. They would then bring it back to us for, we would then maybe tweak things in compliance. We would get, I know we did get one legal opinion on it as it was written with some edits. We would, if there were major changes, we would probably send it to solicitor again for another opinion or any tweaks. And then we would bring it back on our agenda, pass to a second reading and publish as required by law, and then vote to adopt. Or we may not pass, we may decide that we don't like it and we may just leave it.
Thank you.
Those are the options. Counselor Bona, and did I see another hand?
Is it, yeah, I was just curious, when it comes down to the end though, even if the planning board makes recommendations or votes, when it comes to the ordinance, so the final sort of vote on it and say comes from the councils, would, correct?
It does, but zoning ordinance changes have to be approved by the planning board also.
Correct.
Um...
But as for specifics of what some of the guidelines or regulations might be?
But anything that's in the zoning has to be approved by them.
Okay.
The other issue is that some, a lot of what's in this ordinance is already state law, so we could actually not pass anything. And if the building department actually had, or the building department and inspection services had staff, they could enforce it regardless of whether or not we put it in ordinance.
And then one last question through the chair, please, to the mayor. Mayor, so you were at that meeting, or did you attend? So, one of the issues, it seemed like the building director was a little, unfortunately, because we lost some staff, I think he was a bit unprepared for some of the questions, so...
Mr. Maranti is here, if you have any questions.
Oh, there he is. Oh, how you doing? So, I was just curious, how are we going to move forward with that? Because like I say, not everything that was asked was particularly his responsibility, so...
Yes, so we've been having discussions internally. Bill, would you like to address that?
I honestly don't know.
Microphone for the people at home. Sorry.
Is there something specific that you have in mind?
No, no, I just know during the meeting, you know, like I say, I think in the past some of those questions were answered by other staff members, so it wasn't anything specific to you. You answered your, I think, the questions particular to your job, but I think there was some other parts of the discussion that came up that you weren't, it just seemed like you didn't have or weren't ready for those kind of questions.
I don't particularly recall that, quite honestly, but I can say that I was not responsible for penning this, I wasn't the one who wrote this ordinance. And any tweaking of that, certainly my department should have input, but it's never been assigned to us as the authors to change it or to tweak it. There were good ideas, there were bad ideas at that meeting, and I think that's what this is about, is coming to some consensus. I think it could be streamlined. I think also what President Blackmer said was is that it's true. We put in there for clarification some language that leads you to the building code, but even without that language, the building code still exists. And quite frankly, these changes of use, now that they've come to light, now that there's a list, now that there's taxes being collected, will need to be enforced upon when we know exactly the, you know, the depth of it, how many are out there, how many are operating at the moment. So, sure, it could be streamlined, it could be cut down, but the building code is the building code and will be after this meeting and the next, so...
Sorry, I didn't see you behind there, so...
Hiding behind the podium.
Thank you.
Okay, so I want to clarify, this is really, the topic is to set the actual meeting and the hearing, and I think these are valid, these are questions. And there were several community development meetings, and there were several general government meetings. But I do know that there's a lot of, the changes that people are looking for are not things we're going to be able to fix at the local level, they have to be fixed at the state level, so you need to talk to your representatives, approach your delegation, and anybody else you can get to take your ear. Council Paper 11,790, an ordinance to amend Section 10 entitled Special Regulations, Chapter Z of the Revised Ordinance of the City Council, City of North Adams, by inserting in numerical order therein the following, Section 10-13. I'm going to motion to postpone this until the second meeting in March, which would be after our public hearing and after the first meeting of the planning board on this issue. Do I have a...
Hold second.
I'm sorry, I'm recommending that motion, sorry. So, move it.
Yes, I'll move that motion.
And a second by Counselor Aluskowitz, any discussion? We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. I'm just waiting, is this the second page of this? Oh, no. Council Paper 11,985, communication from former Counselor Lamb to investigate opportunities to help slow traffic speed and improve pedestrian safety on Eagle Street. It was voted by unanimous vote to postpone to the meeting, several meetings, refer to the Traffic Commission and Public Safety to postpone the meeting of February 22, 2022. Do we have, without objection, I'll file a communication, do we have a report from the Traffic Commission or Public Safety Committee?
Nothing on the, from the Public Safety at this point.
Or from Traffic. We didn't have a quorum, we did get a few more members appointed at the last meeting, there's another member being appointed today, so I will reach out and we'll set a meeting. So, I would, I would say probably the second meeting in March, we should have...
Do we want to postpone until then? A motion to postpone?
Motion to postpone till the second meeting in March.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Counselor Harpen and Counselor Sapienza? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion, Council Paper 11,231-2A, a report submitted by the General Government Committee regarding the time change of city council meetings. Motion to file the report without objection. And Counselor Wilkinson, do you want to make, read your report or have a discussion on it?
Well, I think I wanted to make the motion on the next, the next part.
Yep.
But the committee, the General Government Committee met, I brought up the notion of changing the start time to 6:00. It was discussed, and Counselor Aluskowitz thought 6:00 might be a little too early, so did Counselor Shade. They opened it up to making a compromise to 6:30, certainly fine with me. We did vote on the matter, and it was, it was passed to change the time to 6:30.
And that was a recommendation of the committee?
That was.
Okay. Do we want to just move right on to the actual ordinance and have the discussion there?
Was it a full vote? Was it...
No, it was two to one.
Thank you.
Two to one, it's in the report, in the paper. So, we can move on to, thank you for the update. Council Paper 11,231-2, amending Chapter 2 entitled Administration of the Revised Ordinance of the City of North Adams, Article 1, Section 2-1.
I'd like to move, to pass to a second reading and publish according to law.
I'll make a second.
Okay, so we have Counselor Wilkinson, Counselor Aluskowitz, and discussion, do you have any comments?
I do. I mean, this is something I, you know, everybody knows that I've tried before unsuccessfully, but I think that had, times have changed somewhat. I'm concerned that we have very few people in the audience. I think that starting at 7:30 kind of makes that thing happen. I mean, if I, if it's me and I'm in my house in February and it's zero out, and all of a sudden, "Oh yeah, let's go down to the city council meeting at 7:30," I'm not going down, I'll watch it on TV. But that does not get input from the public. The people that all come every week here and give us input, we relish that, it's very helpful. I'm going to, at this point, ask through the chair if I could get the mayor's opinion on this, because I know she has one.
Go ahead, then I'll do the council.
Thank you. So, I am in favor of moving this till 6:30. I'm trying to get my staff more engaged in being present in council meetings, and when we talked about it as a team, they said, "Well, one thing is the council meetings start so late and we start so early." So, in an effort to try to get my team more engaged in the council meetings, I'd like to see it moved to 6:30. Thank you.
Counselor Bona, you had your hand raised?
Yeah. I think this has come up at least four times since I've served, and I will continue to oppose it. I will say the later time was a, I found, appreciated very much when I had younger children. When I started council, I was 23, and my son at the time was one or two, and then during my time on council, I had a second child. So, I found it very helpful to be able to go home, spend time with the family, have dinner, and by the time I came here, they were typically already going to bed. So, I did find that, and I feel like that is something that we could be discouraging younger people with families, it just, it does take away from that time. And you could say it's only two times a month, but we have committee meetings and things like that too, so... The other reason I don't like doing it right now is, we just had the election, we knew what the time was when we ran, and I feel like maybe people would have run or not run knowing the time was different. Maybe others would have run knowing if the time was earlier, maybe it would work better with their schedule, or vice versa. Maybe there's, you know, some here that would find it, again, we ran knowing the time and this, this term has just started, so it's changing it right at the beginning of our term. Lastly, I also remember we've had councilors who have worked at distance. I remember one of the times when it came forward, we had Counselor Quatz, who also served as our president, and he worked, I believe, in Schenectady GE, and it was just something that, again, when he ran and knew that he could make that time, and then to change it, it would, it would definitely was changing a schedule. So, I think we're, we could be affecting people who are, who work at distance, who are residents, and again, families. And as for, you know, city staff, I mean, in the past, when we've had council meetings and we've needed certain city staff here, they have, they have come, they have attended. I would think even at 6:30, your staff is still going to most likely end up going home and then having to come back. So, either way, I would think that they're probably not going to hang around city hall for two, two hours, but, and as for people watching or coming, I would be doubtful that our audience will get bigger. I do know that people watch us though, I mean, we all hear people tell us that they do watch us on TV. So, you know, maybe there's nothing good on at 7:30, but, but I'm just saying, people, people are watching us at home, and that doesn't seem to be stopping them. We've tried many things, we've had committee meetings at 5:00 and 6:00 and 7:00, and I don't think, typically the only thing that ever gets more people here is when it's a hot topic that they're interested in. An average agenda does not draw people here, and I don't think it has nothing to do with the time. Thank you.
Counselor Shade?
Yeah, with that, as somebody who relies on public transportation, and knowing that many people in our city do also rely on public transportation, if you work out of town, it's very hard to get back in town for earlier meetings. For example, if you were to get off work and you worked in Pittsfield until 5:00 PM, you would not get back into North Adams until after 6:30, because of the way the bus schedule works. And so, for me, I, I don't have a strong objection to changing the time a little earlier, but I would not want to see it moved before 7:00 PM, and that's a personal preference, and also based on the fact that we do have a lot of people who do require public transportation to get around the county, and the timing of public transportation is poor. So, that would be my recommendation. Thank you.
Counselor Harpen?
Yes, I do remember that this came one other time, I believe it was in 2019, and it didn't pass, and I remember at the time, we had some younger councilors on the, on the council, Counselor Lamb, Counselor Cohen, Counselor Moran, and they all did have small children. And so, to agree with Counselor Bona that, you know, families with small children, that was a concern of all of them, I do remember specifically, especially if they worked out of town. So, if you, if you work in Pittsfield, you get out at 5:00, by the time you drive to North Adams, it's about an hour. You eat dinner, you have a couple of, you know, a little bit of time with your family, and then you're off to a meeting. Where, you know, if you work till 5:00 and then, and then you get here and you get ready for the meeting and you have no time for dinner and no time for your children, by the time you get home, your children are in bed. So, so you're missing that, you're missing that time with your children at that point. So, it was difficult, and that was something I do remember the three of them stressing as a concern. Another concern that I would have is, if it's at 6:30, we always have the hearing of visitors in the beginning of the meeting. So, if someone couldn't make it here for 6:30, they got here quarter or seven or 7:15 or whatever, they would not be able to address the city council on issues that are on the agenda. And, you know, so that is something that, it's difficult to say if someone would be, would want to be here to address an agenda item and wouldn't be able to physically get here in time. So, that would be some, that is a concern of mine as well. I agree, I think 7:00 is more reasonable, I certainly would be, I would change it to 7:00, but I think 6:30 is really stretching it for people that work out of town, people that have small, younger families. And, and people do come based on, on the topic. I mean, we just filled the room in November with the issue of the Mohawk, this room was filled at 7:30. So, it is based on, you know, what the concern is, what's on the agenda, and how it concerns each particular person. But I think we should, we should make it so if people want to come, they are able to make it and they're able to address the council if they wish.
Counselor Bona, I want to hear from other people first, and also want to make sure you're adding something new.
Yeah, I will be adding something new.
Okay. Anyone else want to address this issue? Counselor Obasahan, and then Counselor Sapienza?
Yeah, I'm going to agree with Counselor Harpen. I think a good compromise would be to make it 7:00, you know, 7:30 is, it is on the later side. It's actually, great point that this was brought up too, because I was actually talking about this, you know, with someone about the start time being a little too late. So, you know, I also understand coming from Pittsfield, the public transportation, and getting here, and that the time, I don't think will change the audience unless it's a hot topic, but I think a good compromise would be 7:00 PM for a start time, and, you know, I would, I would go with that.
Counselor Sapienza?
Yes, I definitely support an earlier start time. I think 6:30, as Counselor Harpen and Counselor Obasahan have stated, it might make it tough for some people to be able to attend. I'm not in a situation where I have young children at home or anything like that, so, I mean, a 6:30 start time would be okay with me, but I think we, I think it would be better if we compromise and go with the 7:00 start time.
Counselor Barbeau, do you have anything to add? I just want to make sure I get everybody's input.
Yes, actually, I'm not supportive of the 6:30 change. For me personally, that will be a hardship, but that's my issue to deal with, I guess, if that's the decision the council makes. But I do support what Counselor Bona shared, and that is that when I applied, decided I was going to run to be a counselor, the start time was 7:30, and I knew there were going to be some committee meetings that I would probably need to either adjust my schedule to or ask for the time to be adjusted, but we right now have, most committee meetings start at 6:00 PM, and I rarely see anyone attend. So, I don't, can't support the argument that an earlier start time will bring more people, because I see no employees ever attend those meetings, and I think other than me, through the summer and other councilors, there was barely ever anyone at any committee meeting.
I want to add a quick comment. I'm one of those people that worked out of town for most of the last 15, 20 years, so I think 6:30 works if you work until 5:00 out of town, in general, unless you're working more than an hour and a half away, it gives you time. I don't know how many times I've put my seat in the chair at the planning board as Mike Leary was calling my name, so I understand the 6:00 just really doesn't work, but I also know, we talk about parents and families, we have a school committee that meets at 6:00, and there are several parents on the school committee. I know they only meet once a month and not twice, except for their committee work. Most of the other committees in the city meet at 5:00 or 6:00 in the evening. I do find, I hear from the public, "Why do you guys meet so late?" So, even if they're not here and they're watching on television, they don't even want to watch it on television at 7:30 at night. There seems to be this disengagement after 7:00. I mean, I'm not, I would like to see 6:30, I understand the concerns, the public transportation concerns, I hadn't heard that, you're the first person to bring that up, Counselor Shade, so thank you for bringing that to my attention. I mostly get, they just, they want to watch it, see it, watch it, come to the meeting and get it over with and not have, have it go on into the evening. So, that's my own preference, I understand. I remember Counselor Cohen was more, less about her, she didn't have young children, but she was more concerned about just the fact that if we're going to change the time, we should change it in September for the next year, effective January 1st, has been a potential compromise, because people then run for office knowing what the actual hours are. So, those are kind of my thoughts. I'm a fan of an earlier meeting, but that's, and that's that, and it's based on what I'm hearing from people. Counselor Bona, you had something new to add?
Yes, so the other thing is, there are times we have scheduled committee meetings on the night of council, because we've had that time prior to council. Sometimes it is the only night certain groups can get together that fits the schedule. They figure, well, probably because they have that time off anyway, because they know the council meeting night. So, there have been plenty of times where we've had 5:30, 6:00 committee meetings on council night, and I guess, and no counselor has to say it, I'm willing to do a compromise of 7:00. But at the same time, I just want to make sure that there are no counselors currently serving, that 7:30 is too difficult, because again, we ran knowing what the time was, and if, if... too difficult. Because again, we ran knowing what the time was. And if, if, uh, you know, seven o'clock is still not manageable, we, um, even if it's just one counselor, we, I think in all fairness, they ran knowing it was a 7:30 meeting. So I would just like to hear if there are any counselors that that is not, not doable. Um, and, um, that's it. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second on the table. Do we want to make an amendment to the ordinance?
No. If they want to change it to sell and let them do it on their own.
Okay.
What, is this a majority?
Passed to a second reading and published as required by law. We can do a roll call vote.
Is it majority?
Yep. So do we want a roll call vote?
Yes.
If I'm going down in flames, I'm going down in flames.
Barbo?
No.
Bona?
No.
Harpen?
No.
Obasahan?
No.
Alesskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
No.
Shade?
No.
Blackmer?
You forgot Wilkinson.
Oh, Wilkinson?
Yes.
And then Blackmer.
Yes. So, motion fails. And so it won't be passed to a second reading. It won't be published. Um, council paper 12,085 submission by, of the North Adams City Council Rules of Order 2022, as approved by the General Government Committee. Motion-
Board of Order. Um, on the agenda, there was a paper that should have came before, Paper 12,082. I think that was listed on the agenda.
ordinance amending revised ordinance of the city. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, communication submitted by Counselor Bona, why wasn't anything here?
There should be.
Oh, maybe it stuck. Communication submitted by Counselor Bona, Council Paper 12,082, communication submitted by Counselor Bona requesting time for Mary Scanlon to speak about the fair share, fair share amendment.
Um, Ms. Scanlon, um, messaged me today, um, due to illness. She was not able to make it today, so, uh, request to postpone to next meeting.
So, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Bona, Counselor Shade, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, let's move on back to, sorry about that. Council Paper. I just want to make sure. Uh, Council Paper 12,085, submission of North Adams City Council Rules of Order 2022, approved by the General Government Committee. Um, motion to adopt the Council Rules of Order would be the motion.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Counselor Wilkinson, Counselor Shade. I would like to just add-
Leskowitz.
Oh, I thought it was, I'm sorry. I would just like to-
I know. We're like twins.
Well, you're muffled. It's hard to hear you. Um, I would like to add some liaisons that I hadn't put in the original that revert back to things that we were doing back in 2013. Um, I would like to add and edit under, it would be in, under liaisons. MCL at Mass College of Liberal Arts, One Berkshire, North Adams Chamber of Commerce, Northern Berkshire Community Coalition, Northern Berkshire Regional Emergency Planning Committee, and the North Adams Board of Health. I would also ask that we edit it to reporting to indicate the liaison should be updating us at least twice a year, once in the first half of the year and once in the second half of the year. So if you want to put that under section, they're not lined, they're dotted now. Standing committees. Um, section, it's on page seven.
Yes, page seven.
Page seven E. I'm trying to think what the top, I'm going to go back several pages to get what the number is. Rule 14.
Can I just?
Uh, so we have a motion second? Yes, Counselor Harpen.
Um, just to add that, since we're on the liaison assignments, we did discuss this in the general government meeting. Um, there's a traffic commission member because that member is actually a voting member. It's not just a liaison. And it would be the same thing for the idea commission. So after idea commission, it should actually say member because I believe it's a, it's actually a voting member of that commission. Is that correct?
It's actually the co-chair.
Right. So, uh, it should at least say member.
Thank you for catching that. Um, Counselor Alesskowitz.
These additions right now, is this an amendment to what we're doing or is this-
It's an amendment. No, it doesn't have to go back. Well, it doesn't, you can send it back to committee, but you don't-
We are adding.
We're adding them.
Which one are you adding again? Can you repeat what you're adding?
Um, yes, I'm adding MCL at Mass College of Liberal Arts, One Berkshire, North Adams Chamber of Commerce, Northern Berkshire Community Coalition, Northern Berkshire Regional Emergency Planning Committee, and North Adams Board of Health. And I will have appointments to those at the next meeting. Any discussion on those or that amendment?
Well, you need a motion in a second.
Move to, somebody make a motion to accept those.
I'll make a motion to, to adopt.
Counselor Alesskowitz, Counselor Shade, and discussion on anything else or that? Or on the amendments, sorry?
Or on the amendment.
Yep.
Uh, yeah, actually, I'm, I will, it may likely pass, but I will oppose, um, bringing those back. They're, they're, one of the reasons I think we cleared them off. Um, I, I myself am not a fan of, uh, the liaison, uh, reports. Um, I remember when we had them all and when they were actually due, we would spend an hour, hour and a half, uh, going over our reports that evening, basically stating things that those, uh, entities have already put out there publicly. So we were just reading things that were already in the press. Um, you know, because it really, for a school or a college or the chamber, this is not where they're going to first announce it. So by the time we're reporting it, it's old news. And the other thing is, um, the majority, other than the two Counselor Harpen mentioned, we don't vote on. Um, and, uh, also, um, a number of them don't involve, uh, residents, you know, tax money or anything that the city has control over. While they are entities in the, in the city, we're sort of picking and choosing and saying which ones are important and which ones we should announce on. Personally, instead of having liaisons, I would just rather have, you know, uh, once a month, we invite a representative in and they give a little spiel and, and that's, that's it. But even that, again, it's really not, much of this is, to me, not council responsibility, not duties of the council. Um, and, uh, in the past, I have had, when I've been members, I think I'm, I'm on McCann now, um, you know, usually I would call up the superintendent, I'd be like, tell me what's new. And, you know, again, it was always stuff that was already reported on. So I just have found them to be, most of them to be somewhat of a waste of time. Thank you.
Can I clarify? I had the same feeling. I was the one who removed a lot of them. Also, I think at the time, we had both A, I Berkshires wasn't the only news source for Northern Berkshire. I mean, the transcript was in the city and it made a difference, and they did a lot of reporting. The Eagle does, but they do a lot of reporting outside, and not everyone reads I Berkshires, and not everyone gets the Eagle. And if they're watching us, we can give an update. And I do think that, um, economic development efforts that are happening at One Berkshire are important. I think the impact of the college on the city is important. I mean, we filled up people, what I really would like to put on here, but I know I would get pushback, would be the, um, Berkshire Medical Center. I mean, we had lobbies, we had lobbies and rooms full of people when the hospital closed. If we had had a liaison to them, maybe we would have had an inkling of what was going on. So I, I do think that it's good for us to know what's going on and not every, not everyone reads or sees every article and knows what's going on with all of these organizations. And I think there's, in some ways, almost so much news out there that people aren't reading everything and hearing everything, or they not engaged. And I hear, oh, I don't read the newspaper. Oh, I don't go online to I Berkshires. Well, here we have an opportunity to share things with our committee. The planning board, those meetings are covered by every news source, but we still have a planning board liaison. So I, I, I understand your point. I had that same point of view, but I think in this day, I think it's important for us to be informed, to inform each other, and to inform the public. And that's why I put them back in. Does anybody else have anything to add? Counselor Barbo?
I do have a question. I'm asked, I'm wondering how, is this list just taken from what was previous? Um, just looking at the Chamber, One Berkshire, and the Coalition, all nonprofit organizations, I'm wondering how do we, are, where are we casting a net, these being the three chosen organizations, when we have a multitude of nonprofit organizations in the city that have not been added to the list?
Well, the Berkshire Chamber of Commerce was on the list originally, and now we have two, we have the, One Berkshire merged, and the Berkshire Visitors Bureau was on the list originally, and they are part of One Berkshire. Um, the Northern Berkshire Community Coalition interacts with several, um, provides services to our committee. Yes, you're right, you could go. I was reverting back to some that had, were on the previous list. The only new ones are Northern Berkshire Regional Emergency Planning Committee because they're, um, they've been very active. And since the, um, what, the ice storm of '09, the hurricane in 2011, the hurricane and, or, I'm sorry, storm, all the storms and what they've done with COVID, it's nice to have an update. The Board of Health, I think, is another one because although there is some reporting on it, what they're doing in the city is really important and people need to know. And so you can add or subtract, these were ones that were pretty much there before, other than the last two. And there were several others. CDAG was there. Um, trying to think what the other ones were. So those are just, um, if you, those were chosen because of the interaction, I think, directly. I mean, One Berkshire is the Economic Development Agency for the county. I think Economic Development Agency of the county is a pretty important, um, group to have some conversations with. Counselor Harpen, then Counselor Bona again.
Okay. It's not about this particular issue. It's about another issue in here.
Okay, this is the amendment, so let's finish this one.
Okay, okay.
But thank you.
Um, I don't want to go with this. The, so, and then there's some that are on there that, again, are part of the city. So you take, for example, McCann Tech, you take the schools. We do get, in a sense, a full report from them at budget time. They both come in, they give us full reports. Those, I mean, they're on there. We're not talking about removing, we're talking about the ones adding. But I'm going to just, um, I, I, I just, my experience when we've had these, we've had some very long nights where these reports have gone off. And I, again, it's not our job to be the reporters for these organizations and associations. They can at any time ask the council to be put on the agenda and come in and give us a presentation. Uh, that's sort of what was, you know, um, we saw it with the hotel. We have nothing to do with the hotel. The hotel came in and gave us a presentation. So if any of these organizations want to help get the word out, and if we feel as counselors, we want to help them get the word out, then you tell them, look, I can put you on the agenda, come in. I think it's much better when they're giving a presentation versus us reading off a sheet, telling, you know, the TV screen, here are some updates from the Northern Berkshire Community Coalition. You know, the Coalition, to me, does very good marketing of their own. So I just feel like some of these, our little push here is not going to do anything because usually the reports are at the end of the meeting anyway. And, um, as you said, we've lost most of the audience by then.
Counselor Sapienza.
Yes, I think that, uh, I agree with Counselor Bona. Some of this, uh, these additional liaison assignments are redundant. I would rather much hear from the, uh, people involved in these organizations themselves. Um, if we're reporting on something, we may not have the most accurate or most up-to-date information. So I would not support this, um, to add these, uh, items at this time.
But we want them to come at 7:30 or eight o'clock at night and give those reports. Um, anyone else have anything else to add? So, we have a motion and a second for the amendment. Do you want a roll call vote or you want to just do aye and aye?
I want to do a roll call. This is probably going to be split. Barbo?
No.
Bona?
No.
Harpen?
Yes.
Obasahan?
Yes.
Alesskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
No.
Shade?
No.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. I didn't keep track.
Five A's, four N's.
Five A's, motion carries. Um, and Counselor Harpen had, um, something to ask or add to-
I did.
-the rules in general.
Okay. So Rule 16 is, uh, it's on voting. And this was something that we, we questioned in the general government meeting as well. Um, Counselor, uh, Barbo had some information regarding mass general law and how she believed it did not represent mass general law and actually goes against mass general law. So it was then changed to add, um, sections A through F, um, uh, when you can actually vote or abstain from a vote. And when I looked, when I looked this up, and I just did a Google, um, the information that's provided here, A through F, is reasons for nonprofit boards to abstain from a vote. We are, I don't believe we're a nonprofit board.
I, I totally agree with you, um, Counselor Shade. I think that we should follow mass general law and not Roberts rules in this case. Counselor Shade, you had something to add?
Yeah, the, these, these suggestions, these reasonings were from Roberts as to reasons for abstinence. Like, so it was more of a, these are why you can abstain.
Can I give some background on why this was put in?
Sure.
We had a counselor, we had a couple of counselors who didn't want to vote on the budget. They didn't want to vote for the budget because the taxpayers, they didn't want to raise taxes. But they didn't want to vote against the budget because, and it wasn't because they had a conflict, any financial conflict, any personal interest. It was just they didn't want to be on the record, yes or no. And that's why we put some of these rules in. That's why we put that rule in because we felt that that was disingenuous and unfair to the rest of us who didn't. And that's where a lot of this, that's where the history of adding that in came in. But I think that, um, may or may abstain when the motion is forward. And you guys can make the edits, make a recommendation to what you want to edit. Amend, I guess, is the word. Counselor Barbo?
Yes. If, um, when I brought this up at the general government meeting, um, what I shared with the committee was that this entire rule is in complete conflict with mass general law. That's what I tried to share with them. The only time that, um, everyone has a right to abstain from voting, and that is never, uh, as an elected member required to give a meaning for that. I understand that there may have been reasons to try to change that, but we, I don't see how we can be rewriting mass general law as a way to allow this council to, um, engage in making decisions as to whether folks should or should not vote.
Do you have the copy of the law or the chapter section?
I sure do. It's actually right on the city website. If you look under the Conflict Divinity Law Training-
Do you know what section it is?
...that we're all required to do in January.
No, I know that. I, I, I just didn't know what actual section because I don't remember.
Uh, I could tell you. If, um, it's right on the website. It's under self-dealing and nepotism. I also did discuss it. The only time that any, uh, the council president or any committee chair would be able to ask for a reason would be under rules of necessity. And even under rule of necessity, you would have to have permission from, um, ethics or the city solicitor in order to, uh, encourage that person to vote. We are all required to take this training, every employee of the city, each January. Um, and in addition to that, we're all responsible for up to a $10,000 fine if we do not follow the ethic rules with voting.
That actually is a con, that, what you're saying, and I've seen this happen, it's a conflict. Normally, if you would be conflicted out, but you can't, you don't have enough members to actually have a vote without that person, is what that's rule of necessity applies to.
Correct.
So, um, that con, almost contradicts what we're saying about you can abstain and not give a reason, and you can abstain for whatever reason you want. Is that's what you're saying? That we can abstain, you can abstain, just abstain for absolutely no reason other than you don't feel like voting?
No, it's not what I said. What I said was that Rule Number 16 in our city rules is in complete conflict with Massachusetts general law.
But that's, you said that you can abstain, because our rules say that you have to have a reason to abstain. You're saying that mass general law says you don't have to have a reason to abstain?
No, I said mass general law says we do not need to reach out to the, to the president or to the committee chair for permission.
Well, it's different than not having a reason.
Right.
Um, Counselor, well, they're two, okay, Counselor-
We did change the language. If you see the rule, we took that rule out about asking for permission to abstain from a vote. We put in the, the, there were legitimate reasons to abstain from a vote. We put in the, there were legitimate reasons to abstain from a vote. We took out the language, because it specifically said in the original council rule that you had to ask permission from the presiding chair.
Well, what we've got in the book has it all in there.
Is it still in there?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
That's what the confusion was. What was the rule?
Do we have an updated copy? Because that language was supposed to come out.
This was in the city council papers.
It says if council requests abstention without previously gaining approval for said abstention from the chair, the president may at the discretion ask for clarification of the conflict, yada, yada, yada. Counselor must provide a reason. I thought you guys got rid of all that.
We did, we took it all out.
Okay, well, it's in here. So those were the council papers that were presented. So basically, the amendment, if I understand it, is Council Rule 16, voting. Every member present at council, city council and committee meetings shall vote yea or nay or abstain when a motion is put forward. End of, end of question, is that an amendment as you're reading it?
Based on Mass General Law is what we should say, right?
No, you don't even need to put that in there.
You don't even have to put it in.
Counselor Bona, and then I don't know, there was a thing over here.
When I looked up some of this, and not just the law, how do we, what do we determine an abstention as? So, for example, if you need a majority vote, and you have two abstentions, do they count as no votes, or do they count as not part of the vote? Because that can change, an abstention basically could be a no. If you abstain, and, you know, people, if you're trying to get something passed, you abstain, basically, it's a no vote. But, I read in some areas, and I don't know if this is something that, how it gets written in the rules, is that an abstention can also be classified as not part of the quantity. So, but, you're here. So, I don't know how we've defined that rule, I don't know the legalities of that, because I read different things in my research.
I think it depends on what it is.
Counselor Shade.
Counselor Shade.
Yes, I believe Roberts clarifies that, and it really depends on the type of vote. If it's a simple majority vote and you abstain, it would not count towards the quorum, so it would reduce the quorum number. But if it's a two-thirds vote or something that requires special voting, then that would count towards the numbers, I believe.
We don't follow Roberts' rules if Mass General Law specifies.
Correct, but I'm talking about for numbers under Roberts' rules, which is what we do follow. I don't know what the Mass General Law is on those, but if it's not in law, then it would default to Roberts, and that was what that would be.
And that, I think, is the issue where I was coming up, because Roberts' rule, if we follow the rules, it does sort of say one thing. But I also read that you can put in your own rules how you want to determine what an abstention is. So, again, if three people abstain tonight on a vote, does that mean only six counselors were counted? You know, versus, in the past, we've always sort of looked at abstentions as they're no votes, which, you know.
Yeah, correct.
There, I, I, basically, we have nine people here, and we have four yeses and four nos, and one abstention, then the nos would be, it would go with the no.
And then what about when we need two-thirds? Now, when we need a two-third vote on finance, it always says it's two-thirds of the whole council, if they are here or not.
You need six votes regardless.
Correct, so.
And that's to spend their certain bonding.
So budget, budget stuff.
Budget? No, the budget's not.
Yeah, or borrowing, borrowing, borrowing.
Borrowing needs it, and spending money from stabilization.
Correct, so I don't think abstentions get taken, you know, it doesn't matter, they're going to be considered a no vote.
They would be considered a no vote, in that case. Did we clarify anything? Do we have an amendment? Do we have it as amended?
I think the amendment would be just to have the first sentence in there, and take everything else out.
Do we have a second?
And have it based on Mass General Law.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Zapienza, any more discussion?
What is the motion?
Counselor Aluskowitz, and then somebody over there. Or was it Obasahan, I didn't hear?
I second it, and Counselor Obasahan has a comment.
That's something to say.
Okay. Counselor Aluskowitz, Counselor Obasahan.
My apologies for not seeing, but at the last general government meeting, we did have it established where we took that language out, and apparently it is still in there.
Okay. Counselor Obasahan.
What is the motion?
The motion is to amend Rule Number 16 by deleting everything after, when a motion is put forward, period. Does that make sense? I guess my comment to that is, the voters voted us to do the business, and we should, unless we have an actual conflict, should do our damnedest to make a vote. That's why we're here.
And that says that in Mass General Law and in Roberts' rules.
But, I mean, if you have a financial conflict, then you have a financial conflict.
Right.
And this is just, to the chair, this is just the amendment on that, it's not the whole rules yet.
So we're voting on another amendment. We have a motion and a second, we've had lots of discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any more amendments or discussions? Do we have a motion to approve the rules as amended? I'm sorry, Counselor Shade.
With the ordinance not passing, Section 1 will need to be amended back to 7:30 for the start time?
Okay.
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second?
Second, Shade, Counselor Shade. Rule Number 1, the second.
Oh, yeah, right there, first, first sentence.
Yeah, the, change the 6:30 back to 7:30.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion on that? All in favor of the amendment back to, aye? Opposed? Motion carries. One, one no. Now, any more amendments? So, we have the council rules as presented and amended three times. This is a vote on the entire, everything done. All those in favor of the council rules as amended? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Eight yeas, one no. Counselor Wilkinson said no. Motion carries, let's move on to the next paper. Council Paper 12,086, Communication from Counselor Shade to Review and Implement a Rule That Pertains to an Expected Code of Conduct or Standards of Behavior for the City Council. Counselor Shade, did you want to add this to council rules, or are you setting this as a separate thing?
A separate thing that would eventually be added to council rules, but something.
So without objection, I'll file the communication, and Counselor Shade, do you want to talk about your paper?
Yeah, so in the general government meeting, it was discussed about potentially adding the Employee Handbook as a guide for behavior and conduct. It was felt that by some legal definitions, elected officials are employees, and by many others, they are not. And since there's no way to really enforce a, an employee handbook from the city on elected officials, it was felt that that wasn't the appropriate way to go. But I do think it was important to have a discussion with the full council and all of its members on a proposed code of conduct, based on recent history with the council that has been made public about different people experiencing different issues, and there being a lot of conflicts, personal attacks and such, outside of meetings. And so, when behavior is carried on outside of meetings, then these council rules only apply to us when we are in a meeting, they don't apply outside of meetings. Some kind of code of conduct, or some kind of statement of behavior that we can all agree on, that as representatives of this city, we are always representatives of this city at all times, in the chambers or not, and how we interact with each other, and how we interact with the staff of the city. It is extremely important that we are professional, that we are courteous, and that we do our jobs to represent the people of this city. And I felt that this was something that needed to be discussed further, because it did not go anywhere within the committee meeting, and that the entire council should have input on something like this. I know that it's something that really isn't enforceable, but I think having something in writing that we all agree to shows the voters that we are serious about our jobs, we are serious about representing them in this city, and that we are going to hold ourselves to a higher standard than what has previously been held to.
So, Counselor Shade, the MMA has a lot of resources on this.
Yes.
They've, I've gone to several workshops on it. Would you be interested in drafting some language to move back to a meeting where it's actually, the language is on the agenda?
I would love to. I wanted to have input from everybody else before doing something like that, which is why I brought this straight to here.
Counselor Harpen, I set your hand up.
Yeah, thanks. I just want to thank Counselor Shade for bringing this in, I think it's really important as well. I did bring up the issue in the general government committee, and, and the issue that I brought up is that I, I just wanted to add language that said to use the employee, as, employee handbook as a guide and reference. Whether that mean, you know, for your behavior, for just knowing what is in the employee handbook, because, you know, we deal with the employees, and we should be knowledgeable of what their standards are and what the expectations are of their job. And I think it's just being respectful as someone, as a counselor, to be familiar with the employee handbook and what their expectations are. And we should be able to match those expectations, you know, we should be working just as hard as them, and we should be behaving just as professionally as they are. So, I just thought it was, it was a good reference and a good guide, and, and just two words that I wanted to add. But it did get carried on to some, some other issues, and so, maybe that's a good thing, and, and I'm happy that Counselor Shade took that on, and is, is going to address the issue, so. So I appreciate it, thanks.
I would say, Counselor Zapienza.
Yes, I just want to point out that as elected officials, we're under a spotlight from the public, and that our personal conduct in the council chambers as well as in the public, we're being watched more closely than other people are in the city. We have a responsibility to the citizens of the city of North Adams in that professional conduct, whether we be, like I said, in here in the chambers or outside in the general public. I think we should be an example for those people that have elected us, and I think we owe our voters that have voted us to do this job, that, that, that promise that we, we act professionally at all times. Thank you.
And Counselor Shade, I want to follow up with that. I know that there's several examples at the MMA, because I know that that's where the ones I got that we used in Buckland, that we actually put on the front door, put on everybody's desk that, because we had had issues with how the staff were treated by the public, is where it was, where we were getting most of it in that case, so. And you want to take that and then give us some ideas, and then I think, I am better at looking what somebody else has done and thinking, oh yeah, that's a good idea, but I think this needs to be tweaked. So, that's where I give input. Anyone else wish to add to this? Okay, great discussion. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor.
I also agree, I think that within that language, even accordingly in chambers, outside of the chambers, and also social media, if something can be there. I've seen a lot of back and forth on, on social medias, and I know that is a somewhat of a platform where there is like freedom of speech, but I think you should also act accordingly on, on social media as well. So if we could have some language in there as well, that'd be great.
Anyone else? Okay, so we'll move on to the next council paper. Council Paper 12,087, Mayor's Communication 35, Appointing Lawrence Jowett to the Windsor Lake Commission for a term to expire April 1st, 2024. Mayor, are you going to speak to these, or you just want me to run through them?
Only if you have any. Only if you have any questions.
Okay, so, a move to confirm would be in order.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council Paper 12,088, Mayor's Communication Number 36, To Appoint Mary Louisetta to the Commission on Disabilities for a Term to Expire December 1st, 2024. Recommendation is presented to City Council for approval, move to approve would be in order.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council Paper 12,089, Mayor's Communication 37, Appointing Jessica Lindcourt to the Board of Assessors to Fill the Unexpired Term of Ross Vavori for a Term to Expire December 31st, 2022.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council Paper 12,090, Mayor's Communication 38, Appointing Barbara Murray to the Tree Commission for a Term to Expire January 1st, 2025. Recommendation to present for confirmation.
I'll second. Motion to approve?
Okay, Counselor Aluskowitz and Counselor Zapienza. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council Paper 12,091, Mayor's Communication 39, Appointing Stephen Betty to the Tree Commission for a Term to Expire January 1st, 2025. Recommendations presented for council confirmation.
Motion to approve?
Counselor Harpen, Counselor Aluskowitz, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council Paper 12,092, Communication Number 40, Appointing Carol Boucher to the Parks and Rec Commission for a Term to Expire May 1st, 2027. Confirmation only, motion to confirm would be in order.
Motion to approve?
Counselor Harpen and Counselor Aluskowitz, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council Paper 12,093, Mayor's Communication Number 41, Appointing Paul King to the Traffic Commission for a Term to Expire January 10th, 2025. Council approve, confirmation only.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Counselor Zapienza and Counselor Shade, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council Paper 12,094, Mayor's Communication 42, Appointing Jonna Blair to the Council on Aging for a Term to Expire January 1st, 2025. Confirmation only.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Counselor Aluskowitz, Counselor Shade. Motion to approve. Let's go back to the beginning.
Aye.
Anyone wish to address?
We didn't vote on that one.
Oh, I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Anyone wish to address the council during open forum on issues of municipal significance? Two minutes, name and address for the record, no personal attacks.
Okay, my name is Eric Wilson, where I live? Oh, I live at, it's like Yelkore, 85, yeah, I think it's 85 Eagle Street. I want to address the council about, about like the people being here. And people, people should represent, you're supposed to represent us, but we need to represent ourselves too. Why people are not coming here, because sometimes their voice is not always heard. Sometimes I can get intimidated, I used to get intimidated with people like you. Didn't think I knew anything because of my disability. That's why I'm representing people with disabilities, and I'm very proud of my disability. I care about people. I agree with Wayne that we need to have some action. You guys like you're talking to each other, and then we, we gotta get up and, 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 get up and to say something, and then when you say something, some people like to ask a question, but we can't do it, because that, that's being rude. We need that action both ways, you can't just have it on one side. That's why people are not coming here. It's times I don't even want to be here, but I know I need to be here to say something. You've got a lot of good ideas right in front of your eye, right in front of you. That's why some places are, we're action. I'm not trying to condemn you, I just want you to realize to think a little bit outside your box. I know you need rules to respect for each other, but it doesn't have to be complicated. It's just not. I know that my whole life, and I'm 60 years old, I'm going to be 61, and I'm still worrying about myself, and I don't say it all that, and I'm not ashamed of who I am. You've got to realize the people, why people doesn't, not always the time, it's how they feel to come here. They want to feel welcome. And I have people shun me a lot of times, it's amazing, and I still talk to people. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Bye there, ma'am. Hi there, mom.
Anyone else wish to address the council in open forum? Mayor's concerns?
Did we change that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we adopted it. The agenda was done before it was adopted.
That's okay. Mayor's updates. So I believe it was Counselor Oleskowitz had brought up last meeting about Walmart. I just wanted to provide an update that we are working with Patrick Tierney from Mass. DOT. We've shared a lot of data and we're looking forward to circling back very soon, hopefully before your next meeting, to talk about an action plan down there. So just wanted to let you know that that's in action. Also, in regards to the Mohawk Theater, in preparation for issuing a new RFP, we will be holding two focus group meetings that will be open to the public. The first one will be at 6:00 PM on Monday, March 7th. And the second will be at 6:00 PM on Thursday, March 10th, right here in council chambers. The purpose of the meeting is to get input from the community about their vision for the Mohawk Theater. And any data that's gathered will be shared in part of the RFP under a section called Community Input. So I hope the council can attend as well. Go ahead, Lisa.
Clarification, I know that you're getting input. Are you also going to take people who might not want to come to the meeting, but we'll send you something in writing?
Absolutely.
So can we make that kind of note that, to send writing to your office?
Sure.
Also, how are you going to negotiate the crowd?
How am I going to negotiate?
I mean, we've got limited seating in here. I thought we were going to go with a bigger space.
No, I think we're gonna, we'll probably be okay. We'll probably use these chairs back here.
Okay.
And maybe some in the front row. I won't move your tables, I promise. But I think we'll, I think we'll be fine.
Okay.
I'm hoping.
I just, it was standing room only last time.
Yeah. You mean COVID's not going away February 28th? Budget season is underway as far as my office is concerned. Counselor Bona and I are meeting tomorrow to discuss the timeline, so more to follow on that. And I also wanted to just take an opportunity to thank Susie Helm and all of our volunteers for organizing Winterfest, which took place last Saturday. It was a great day of a much-needed day of fun, laughter and community spirit. Anyone who was in the downtown, it was a wonderful day despite the snow. I think it made it festive. So thank you, Susie, for volunteering to get that off the ground. Thank you.
Committee reports in minutes. Liaison updates and counselors concerns slash updates. Counselor Bona?
Through the chair to the mayor. Mayor, so I've noticed you, and I appreciate it, you're filling a lot of empty seats. And I'm just curious, do you happen, off the top of your head, how many empty seats are left?
A lot.
Oh, is there still a lot?
Yeah. We have vacancies that have been vacant for a while. And then we have some reappointments. So I think I'm, I have like 22 left total. But we also have a committee that's been on the books for a while that has 10 seats. So we're working through those. I will say after the Berkshire Eagle ran the article about boards and commissions, we've had an uptick of people emailing us through the website. So that's been good. But we're just trying to fill and, you know, fill the interests of people first.
If, if I could continue, because I know Counselor Harpen has asked us in the past and maybe, you know, obviously you're doing a good job filling them. But if, if, maybe if there's some seats out there that you know, want to pass on to the counselors and say, here's where we still need some new people and we can help spread that word out to pass some names on to you, that might be good.
Sure, absolutely. I'd be happy to share that information. But our website is up to date as of the last meeting. My new assistant, Diane, has been doing a great job in updating that and she'll update it again this week. So I think that's the best tool that we have, but I'll be happy to share all that information with you.
Does it list currently what's needed?
Yes.
Oh, okay. That's fine. As long as it's, that's, we can pass that on.
We've been doing a lot of scrubbing of the website.
So go back to the committees appointments. And it's probably on the website, but these committees, and maybe you can like give me a number. Are you like something like students to serve on these committees? Like for example, M.C.L.A. students or?
I believe everyone has to, except for maybe youth services, has to be over 18 and a resident, a permanent resident in North Adams. But I can clarify that for you, Counselor.
But college students can be resident, I mean, they can, they can get their residency here and vote and everything.
Right, if they're defined as a resident here.
Okay.
But I'll clarify that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the mayor? Okay, counselors concerns, anyone else? I just want to echo the mayor's comments about Winterfest. It was fun. It was, the snow was unexpected and although it made problems on the roads, it really added a touch to Winterfest. So I'm glad that we were able to have it this year after the hiatus due to COVID. And I guess that's it. We don't have any correspondence. A motion to adjourn would be in order.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.